Nobody sees you. That's that's for you to nail. It's the first three pages. Just to give an example. We'll talk after the meeting.
Hi Mason, how you doing? Yeah, never better.
Hi Jim.
Stayed on it.
Do open the meeting with a pledge allegiance to the flag.
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, have a seat. Next item on the agenda is the roll call. Proceed with the roll call please.
Ronald Knuff.
Present.
Kenneth Hall.
Present.
Bonnie Almond.
Here.
Trevor Stone.
Here.
Ronald Glassick.
Here.
Judith Haldeman.
Here.
Jason Donahue.
Here.
Mason Smolinak.
Here.
Julie Kutzler.
Here.
Mayor Anthony Prestag.
Present.
Hearing a person present, anyone that has anything to say, step up to the mic. State your name, address, and your complaint.
How's it guys doing?
Hi.
My name is Kim Garrus. I live at eight nineteen Howard Town Road. And I'm here tonight just to introduce myself as I um fill out the application for the zoning committee.
Questions?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Um what's your interest or knowledge of zoning?
Um it's always been an interest in mine. I'm a small business owner of a remodeling company. Been doing remodeling for thirty years now.
Can you speak into the microphone, sir?
Yes, sorry. I have a small remodeling business. Um I've been in it for about thirty years now. So I just wanted to maybe help out with the the small community.
Any any um building grounds up from the, you know, you you've done it too?
Yes, yes, I have. I don't have any like experience as far as like as zoning goes, but building permits and the code book and all that, I have experience in.
I'll be the first one to ask because I just do that, sorry. So don't take this very personally.
Sure, no, I don't.
Any personal interest in doing that?
None, none whatsoever.
Just have to ask the question.
That's that's completely fine.
That's just me, so you'll know that down the line.
Yeah.
Does some people want to ask?
I know being on the committee is not going to give me a leg up on the next guy.
Okay.
I understand that.
Good to understand, and thank you for directing it right back.
The rules are the rules and the laws are the laws.
Appreciate that, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you stepping up too.
Thanks.
We do need people. There might be other questions.
I have a question. Would you be interested in taking any training that would be available for zoning?
Yes, I would.
Thank you.
Do you understand that that will be an additional time commitment of yours? Perhaps at no with no reimbursement or maybe the training would be paid for or not, but there are a lot of good trainings out there, basic on zoning. That would be my my question would have been the same to you. Um you know, but do you have the time availability perhaps put into that?
I do, I do. I understand that some of it's going to be.
I think zoning is just a a big
Right.
topic and kind of lots of information is out there overwhelming. Thank you. So I I echo Mr. Glassick. Thank you for stepping up and offering your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Moving on to item number five. Consider the request of the Veracuse Veracruz Community Association.
We have received a request from Veracruz Community Association for the use of their portable ban trailer on Sunday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty four. They have used the ban trailer in the past and there were never any problems. And they have been made aware that there will be no waiver of fees and a certificate of insurance will be required.
What is the opinion of the council?
Make a motion.
Motion made. Motion made by Mr. Glassick. Do I get a second?
So.
Mr. Stone, any questions? Any question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider the appointment to the zoning hearing board.
We have received an application from Kim Garrus of Borough Resident to serve on the zoning hearing board. He was the gentleman that just introduced himself.
Make a motion to accept his application. I don't know if you had to say hire.
Appointment.
Appointment, okay, thank you.
Bless. Mr. Glassick made a motion to appoint him to the zoning hearing board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Now, Mr. Donahue, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Number three, consider the appointment of the alternate zoning hearing board members.
There are several local communities that have appointed alternate delegates to serve on the zoning hearing board in the absence of the regular members. Uh we are asking that uh council consider this and open this up to applications. They would only serve when needed.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve that request.
Motion made. Beg Ms. Haldeman to approve. Do I get a second?
Second.
I'll grab one.
Second to second by Ms. Almond. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Okay, now we look at consider hiring a public works laborer.
During the interview process, Jonathan Kunkel also applied for the labor's position and the committee recommends hiring him. His hiring would be contingent on successfully passing a physical and a drug test. He is the young gentleman sitting there with the curly hair.
He didn't step up to the mic.
Step up to the mic, introduce yourself.
Interview's not over.
The pain is not done yet.
Your name is?
Jonathan Kunkel.
And you applied for?
Uh the public works labor position.
And why would you want to work on public works?
Well, I was a summer help for two summers and I really enjoyed it, so I thought I'd give it a try and become a full-time employee.
That's a good answer. I liked that. So can I, okay, Jonathan, have a seat. We're just messing with you. This is Mr. Glassick you gotta be afraid of down there, not you. He's your boss. If you see him riding around, you're in trouble. Just kidding, Jonathan. Can I get a motion to hire Jonathan Kunkel?
I'll make a motion.
You might want to ask for a raise.
Okay, who makes the motion? Mr. Bonnie? Ms. Almond? And I'll get a second.
I'll second.
But Mr. Hall, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Welcome aboard, Mr. Kunkel.
Stop in the office sometime, we'll get you squared away.
Thank you. Consider hiring an accountant, bookkeeper.
Several candidates were interviewed by the administration of finance chairperson Ken Hall, council president Julie Kutzler, current bookkeeper Mary Ellen Handlin, Brian Wellsco, and myself. They recommend that David Strain be hired. His hiring also would be contingent on successfully passing a physical and a drug test. He is the gentleman sitting in the last row.
Step up. If Mr. Kunkel had to, you have to also.
He does not have curly hair.
Just got a haircut over the last weekend. Uh my name is David Strain. I currently live in Hennepin Township, Northampton County. Um I uh lived there quite a while, lived there as a as a youngster and and presently, so I've been in Hennepin Township quite a while. Um always been interested in how local governments um operate and how they how they serve their communities, so um I I this is uh gonna be fascinating for me, so interested in learning. And I interviewed with those two folks right there in the middle there and uh Brian back there, so um they uh really um sold me and I I'm pretty eager to eager to get going.
I'll have to tell you something, Mr. Strain, interesting is not the word. Thank you. You have a seat, please. Okay, so do I have a motion on the floor?
Uh motion to Motion to approve David Strain.
By Mr. Stone, second by Ms. Haldeman. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Welcome aboard, Mr. Strain.
If I could see you after the meeting.
Okay, item number ten on our agenda. I still think we need to have Music Mondays, but that's neither whom nor them. Reports from committees, starting with administration and finance. Mr. Hall.
Thank you. The Atlas Museum curator Ed Pannie reports that on February sixteenth thirty uh high school, uh correction, NASD elementary teachers and administrators toured the facility. On February nineteenth, the museum welcomed thirty-five members from Pennsylvania Earth Science Association. They made seventy-five dollar donation to the museum. Beginning in May, all the NASD fifth grade students will tour the museum. We received a notification from Allen Township manager Eileen Eckert that Will Brook Bridge will remain closed at least until April the twelfth of twenty twenty four. And as of close of business Friday, March the first, we received a check for nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-four cents in garbage payments. Um I'm not sure of the exact date too, but the other bridge in Allen Township um is also slated for then I want to say the eleventh. Uh and that's only going to be northbound traffic uh out there by the Copper Pannies.
Oh, the one of Howard Town Road.
The one of Howard Town Road going towards the fire company. Uh and that's going to be that way for extended period of time, so that's another bridge that's under construction, so just throwing it out there. I want to say it's the eleventh, but don't pull me to it. End of report.
Thank you. Building, land, and recreation. Ms. Haldeman.
Thank you. Mr. Brobs has found it necessary to once again change the date of the annual borough Easter egg hunt. It will be on Sunday, March twenty-fourth, which is Palm Sunday, for those that celebrate, at one P M. The egg stuffing seminar, egg stuffing seminar, we are making it sound fancy this year, Leroy. Will be held on Wednesday, March twentieth, beginning at approximately five thirty P M. March first was the opening day for resident park permit reservations. The turnout was slightly less than anticipated. Work is underway at the municipal swimming pool. The diving board that was purchased last year is being installed, as well as the new water slide. And if I may ask, if we are also working on lifeguards?
Oh, we'll be fine with lifeguards.
Okay.
Trust me.
I always, I always
We have the last four years.
Last year we had more lifeguards than we knew what to do. We shipped some of them over to Coppeland.
Well, that's nice, but a question if I may, and I'm sorry, but are we, do we have an extended time period instead of closing it before the end of, before Labor Day?
No.
That's my whole thing. Because they all go back to school, right?
Yep.
Okay.
I believe my report is over, although I have a feeling we'll be talking about the swimming pool a little bit more later on.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Code and police, Mr. Stone.
Yes, thank you. Uh the zoning hearing board will meet on two separate evenings, Wednesday, March thirteenth and Thursday, March fourteenth. It was necessary to schedule additional time to accommodate the agenda items. We received a co-report uh and the co-income report for February two thousand twenty-four. Uh they responded to thirteen co-complaints, received a total of nine thousand one hundred ninety dollars for registration and inspections for the month of February. Uh a meeting was held with our engineer David Lear regarding a traffic study that was done in the area of Fourth Street and Howard Town Road. The reports contain a number of suggestions which are currently under discussion. End of report.
Thank you. Fire and health, Ms. Almond.
Thank you. Enclosed in our packets is the Board of Health meeting that was held on January thirtieth and a summary report that covered December twenty twenty-three and January twenty twenty-four. Several members of council, the mayor and Mr. Brobs, were the guests of the fire department on Saturday, March second, at the Alliance Fire Company. They sponsored their annual dinner meeting and a fine time was had by all, and I agree, I was there. The fire committee met on Monday, March fourth, at six thirty P M. End of report.
Thank you. Public Works and sewer, Mr. Glassick.
Thank you. Uh the sewer tapping connection was completed on Franklin Street and Barn House Apartments. The existing sewer pipe is an eighteen inch in diameter and Mr. Brobs only advises them not to break it. Understand? You know so much about sewer.
I know a lot about sewer.
All right. Superintendent Gillespie is investigating an opportunity for a certified operator candidate to take twelve-week free course. The biggest problem in this is that the sessions are held in Harrisburg on twelve consecutive Wednesdays beginning at seven thirty A M. On Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, we had an opportunity to see the demo of a soft dig machine. The soft dig machine is a complete unit that uses pressurized water to loosen soil around utility lines, which can be sucked out uh in a very strong vacuum. Mr. Brobs has the machine budgeted for purchase this year at approximately a hundred thousand dollars. I'd like to add to my report from Public Works manager supervisor Greg Maury um that the winter of twenty twenty-three and early twenty twenty-four, they had five plowed events. Five hundred tons of salt and anti-skid were used, three hundred ton- ton is still in reserve. We had one week of snow removal of from streets. There was not a snow emergency, or there was? I don't know. There was? Okay.
There was?
Just for the one morning. Just the one morning I thought.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Monthly uh the camera, the camera for sanitary sewer lines in Washington Main Street and East Ten Street Line has no break showing that the U G I construction area did not cause. Sanitary sewer line construction of a hundred forty-five feet and eight-inch PVC main rail on the railroad street fourteen and fifteenth is a five-by-four lateral. C D L drivers class one, class one A, and a class B driver training hours are needed in the documentations. I just want to thank Greg for getting these reports to us and letting us understand, since we are going to be losing Greg later in this year of retiring, it's nice to see him that he's sending these reports ahead of time. Appreciate that to Greg Maury, our supervisor. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Okay. Hanging that up, we'll go reports from committees. I'm sorry, I read committees, I jumped one. Council members. Uh we'll start with Mr. Knuff. Since we ended up down that way, we'll start with you. Do you have a report?
At this time, I have nothing right now.
Thank you. Mr. Glassick.
I do. Surprise, right?
Um first of all, congrats to everybody. Kim, thank you for stepping up and taking that position. Looking forward to working with you. Uh congratulations, Jonathan, on getting the position at the work, and also David uh for the bookkeeper. We definitely need new blood and changing of the guards here is interesting, so all the candidates, I appreciate that stepping forward. Don't forget to change your clocks this weekend so that you're not running an hour late, everybody. Um I wanted to thank Brian again for giving me the list about the viewing of our live streaming. In two thou- in February fifteenth meeting, we had two hundred and two that viewed this. This is a up seventy-five views compared to the previous meeting, which was a hundred and twenty-seven. It just goes to show that even though we don't have a large crowd here, we have a lot of people that are interested in listening and watching that. So a two hundred and two views on February fifteenth meeting, I'm very excited about that and thank you for sharing that with us. Leroy, I also want to thank you and Brian for sending out the A P bills. It gave us a chance to review them. I know we don't have them because of the situation this week, but I do have some questions about that. If we're going to take it, if we don't, that's understandable because we don't have them in front of us. We can do it at the end if you want.
That'd be fine.
Okay, that's fine. And then the only other thing I have is that sidewalk issue at five eighty-one East Ten Street. I don't care if it's Verizon or if it's P P L or whoever, but sooner or later, we need to do it as a borough, fix the sidewalk, do some kind of repair on it, and then bill Verizon or P P L. And I keep on saying about making this a public issue because the media is to our advantage, when they dug up this over almost a year and a half ago to fix a pole or the infrastructure on the lines, not only did a lot of people's yards going up through Atlas Lane, um they stuck flags in that you're not supposed to remove, but yet the flags are still there and they have not came back to fix the sidewalk that they ripped up. So we do need to get that kind of stuff fixed. If you see areas of your sidewalks that are damaged through U G I, through P P L, Verizon, please come and let us know. Because I would like to get a list of where we can get them to fix these things. If we have to fix it ourselves with our public works, now that we have a lot of young people coming on board, so be pair Jonathan. Um concrete work, but we do have to get this fixed. Uh these are walking areas, these are hazards. Um and I think we need to take a a hard stand on that curbing and sidewalks throughout our borough. That's the end of my report.
Well, thank you, Mr. Glassick. Mr. Donahue.
Well, thank you. Uh welcome all three gentlemen to the borough. Um I'd like to thank the Public Works Department for fixing the potholes last week on Main Street. I don't have to dodge them anymore. And just a friendly reminder, street cleaning starts next Monday. If you are in street, there will get, you will be ticketed. Uh end of my report.
Thank you. Ms. Almond.
Thank you. Congratulations to Kim, Jonathan, and David. Welcome to the borough family. So as mentioned in the committee reports, the fire committee meeting was held on Monday. I just wanted to share some of the highlights from that meeting with you. Um as some of you know, that we were looking for a site for the training facility for the fire department, and that is not going very well. But we do have a possible solution, and that would be to apply for an L S A grant of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to cover, if not all, at least some of the cost of portable Connex containers. They are stackable containers approximately sixty feet by twelve feet wide. And some of the benefits to use in this method would be to keep the training on the fire station property. They wouldn't have to travel at least an hour to and from the current training site that they're look, that they are using it. And the second benefit would be certification, the firefighters will be local. Fire year plan, looking down the road, some of the um feelings were that they have outgrown parts of the fire station. They would like to see expansion of the fire station, not the apparatus area where the equipment is kept. That's okay right now. But they're looking to add another bathroom, administrative office space, a new lounge, and the sleeping area. The gear racks have minimal security right now, and with the public constantly in and out of the station, safety is a huge concern for them. They feel that it's a recipe for disaster. The firemen are asking to have five, have the remaining fire hydrants supplied with five-inch STURZ. In the past, the Water Authority provided a number of these STURZ, but not for all the borough hydrants. This is a piece of the hydrant that makes it much easier to remove and hook up the water hose. So I'm going to ask um Ms. Haldeman and Mr. Glassick, maybe you can work with the Water Authority, see if they STURZ, S T U R Z.
Thank you.
Five-inch. And see if they would um provide whatever is needed. I asked for a quantity they didn't offhand. If I can get that for you.
Ron, it's the, it's the, on the, on the hydrant, you see there on the bigger the knuckle on the end of the quick, the quick connect.
Yeah, where that thing that is.
Go by it and you'll see they are on all of them, that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you. And then they had also mentioned that maybe five, ten years down the road or sooner, it would be a possible plan to pay the firefighters. The fire police are always looking for volunteers, so if anyone out there is interested, please contact our captain, Ken Hall. And lastly on this, I would like to say, due to the success of the fire camp last summer, we have six or seven junior firefighters currently with the fire department. I think that's a great success. I would like to give an update on the civil service.
Okay.
We had five completed applications that were received and letters of acceptance were mailed out. And it included the testing date, which is going to be Saturday, April sixth, and that's for both the written and the agility tests. And I have one more thing to ask. Leroy, um was the letter sent to the railroad regarding the safety issue at Ten and Main?
I spoke with uh Adam Horwith on that, and he he referred me to Norfolk Southern, and that uh has, I think, fallen on deaf ears.
Okay, can we get a letter out to them possibly?
Yep.
Thank you.
Can I add to that, Bonnie?
Yes.
Nothing to interrupt. Okay, so after that night, after that meeting that night when I was brought up, I was leaving the fire station one night, heard this, heard the the blast, heard that they were going through, so I went down to the end of Orchard Miller and sat there and watched. Um ironically, they did have somebody with a flare. They were coming across from the the west side, they came across, they stood with a flare. They laid the flare down. Unfortunately, they laid the flare, I guess there's no good side or bad side. They laid the flare on the south side, on the, yeah, the gas station somewhere, the, the train came across, he blew a horn, he hops on the train, they go across. Now it's blacked out. The flare that he put there is on the other side. Car came down through the hall, was going faster than the twenty-five miles an hour, just supposed to go Main Street. Went past me, went through, hit the brakes because you see a black wall in front of you.
Yes.
So that is what's happening. I mean, I see what they're saying. I know what we would like them to do. But I just purposely sat there and watched and watched it happen. It was dark because they always start moving those cars at night because they got to wake up all the neighbors.
Right.
We've already gone through that complaint. But time, we, it is less traffic and everything, but that was just a perfect scenario. It was dark, it was there. This pickup truck that came through, came from Turkey Hill, came as he's coming out of the curve out of the hall and
Yep.
all of a sudden, there it is. And the flare, they they did put a flare on. The flare was on the other side of the the train.
Yeah.
And he hopped on, so I think they should still be there. They can hop on the backside of the train when they go through. I feel likewise. They should, like we discussed, have somebody, either on both sides, but have some more lighting down there.
Well, I agree.
And or
And even if they're not going to do anything with us asking, we have a documentative, so should there be a liability there? It might be removed from the borough and on them instead of us. So I'm looking at it.
I like that.
End of report.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Today marked the beginning and the launch of the Hometown Heroes Banner Project. Here I have some of the handouts. Thankfully, they tried to print them out, but I have them here to distribute out to the council of what the first post looks like, so I'll still hand these out.
Thank you.
For the first one, we decided to do Edward Reader. He was a soldier who actually enlisted before eighteen. He was seventeen to go fight in the Korean War. He was, his body was found, or his bones were found next to a Korean, so it was implied that he was fought, well, he fought to the death with a Korean and sacrificed his self for his country. Um also within these, you can see, these images are actually from his funeral service. And there were, oh, images don't suck, but they And there were, oh, images don't sell, but there were Korean diplomats that actually came to honor his death due to his sacrifice. With this, we are looking forward to releasing one a week for now until we have more interviews done, which we are actually on the second cohort of interviews, so we're moving through them rapidly and we're hoping as we get on, we can release two a week so that we don't have to wait, you know, keep doing one a week.
This is very nice, Mason. Thank you.
And when you say they're going to be released, where are they released to?
Um, on here, you can see, this is the Instagram account, Northampton Hometown Heroes, and there's also a Facebook page. And there is, I believe, a press report coming out that will also mention the account names for anyone that is not seeing this meeting. So, if they have any family members that are on the banners, they'll be able to see it through there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. That was very nice. Ms. Haldeman.
Thank you. Uh, I, I, I just would like to say that I, the gentleman who stopped in, I believe it was at the last meeting or maybe the meeting before that, Mr. Kohler, who came in to express concern about, um, traffic, truck traffic on Twenty-Sixth Street. It is something that I am attempting to look into and try to get some further information to. I have spoken with the chief, I, um, need to speak with Mr. Brookes a little bit about some ideas. And then, um, at a future meeting, we'll talk a little bit more about it. But I, I want to assure him that I, I think that it is certainly something that is worth looking into. Especially we have the playground right there too, so certainly, um, you know, we, we would like to hope that we can work with the trucks to, to have a better traffic pattern in that, in that area. I also, I'm going to kind of put it out there, I, I am attempting to continue to contact the woman who sent the letter to the borough about the memorial tree. I will not drop that, but she has not returned my phone call as of yet. I will, uh, reach out again. I also, Leroy, I'm just going to stop in and talk to you a bit at some point, but a, a business owner asked me about, um, kind of re- refreshing, some of the directional painting, directional signs on painting on the street. Maybe this, when the weather gets warmer, we get the guys out there, I think our summer help could even do that. And I'll give you the street name when I know the street name, because you know me, I know where it is, but I don't know the names of the streets. I, I, I wanted to ask just a question regard to, uh, what Mr. Classic read about Public Works and sewer with Superintendent Gillespie looking into that twelve week free course. I, I'd really like to see who he's looking at talk, you know, getting out there and, and since it's a free course, perhaps we could ask, um, fund the hotel room for the night before, have that person drive out after work and I don't know how that would all work and I know that that's more up to you, but I, I wouldn't like to pass up an opportunity for some training, especially with it's free, that if we're not paying for the training, maybe we can fund the, the housing of that individual that would be identified. It's, it's a question I'm, I'm, I guess I'm asking in my, in my prattle. I also, um, would like to know perhaps for again, a future meeting, if we could have an update on where we're at with the sewer plant and, uh, and the work on it. I know that we put out some bids and that was kind of where I remember us being at. So, maybe we could get some more information from you, maybe for another meeting soon. Same with the pool. I, I, I know that it's obviously an issue, um, we can't go when the kids are going back to school. You've got a mix of college students and, and, um, even high school students that perhaps have the fall sport and so their time is taken up. But I'm hoping that we can maybe avoid that one situation we had where the fire department absolutely stepped up for us, but that we don't have to shut, shut down on maybe the hottest day of the year, if there even is one this year. But again, I know it's unpredictable, I'm just kind of throwing it out there again, assuring that we do have enough staff. Hopefully that we can kind of cover, um, all, all timing of all summer, thank you. I also want to welcome all the gentlemen that we hired tonight, wish everybody the best of luck. Jonathan, you've got big shoes to fill, buddy, you, uh, your summer help, so you got to step up now, right? Good for you. And that is the end of my.
Thank you, thank you for bringing it up about the pool. That's my love too.
No, it's not, Mr. Brokes.
I know, but I love that pool. Mr. Stone.
Uh, yes, thank you. Congratulations to King Garrus for the, um, zoning hearing board appointment. Congratulations to Davis Strain for the accountant and John Kunkel for Public Works, welcome aboard. Uh, I received a few complaints, uh, with garbage being left on the, the streets after Republicans gone through with garbage pickup day. Uh, and then someone actually witnessed, um, one of the workers throwing a garbage bag fifteen, fifteen to twenty feet from the curb to the back of the truck, onto the street, so someone else could throw it in the back of the truck. So, I'm not sure if they were playing basketball out there with their garbage bags or what, but, if you have garbage in your streets, that's probably what's happening is that they're breaking as they're throwing them. So, I don't know if somebody could reach out, Brian, maybe you could reach out to them and give a friendly reminder not to be, uh, to using our garbage bags as basketballs. That'd be much appreciated. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Hall.
Thank you. Well, congrats to the three of yous, I know it's been said over and over and over. And pretty much everything else has been said, I think we hit everything tonight and my interjections, so that's all I have.
Well, it, now it's the mayor and my turn.
There you go.
Would you, you go first.
Okay.
Coming back this way.
Welcome aboard, gentlemen, it's going to be a nice ride for you, I'll say that.
Mr. Steph.
Yeah, I did want to.
Oh, no, no way. I just said, I almost left you out. Go ahead, Mayor.
It's okay.
It's okay.
Yes, I know. I, I know we've been talking a lot about the Hometown Heroes Project with the students and the student volunteer committee at Northampton High School has really exceeded all expectations. Mason is the chairman of that committee and I want to give a heartfelt thanks out to Mrs. Becky Wagner and Mrs. Gretchen, Gretchen Troxell for really taking care of the group and helping out with their abilities and organization and their great leadership and their character, personality, which is really making it a lot of fun for the students. History's not taught as much in the high school as it used to be. But one of the intentions of this, uh, which has really turned out, again, better than I expected, is what the students are learning. A few of them have been taken to tears with the interviews that they've had. We have thirty interviews, uh, ready to be published. And what you see here is an idea I gave to Mason. He put this all together in this template. Okay? Minor changes on my part, but with his expertise and, and his initiative, this is what came out. Okay? And again, uh, on a personal level, we started with Eddie Ryder as he was an MIA. After almost seventy years, they finally brought him home. Okay, it was a very moving time for me and, uh, we have some extra pictures on the Facebook page. So, we have officially launched the Facebook and Instagram pages for hometown heroes. And everything can be found on simply Googling hometown, excuse me, Northampton hometown heroes. And the page will come up and we'll have information there, we'll keep rotating through as we get the interviews and looking to humanize these soldiers and servicemen and women beyond what is on the banner, which is the intention here. But what's being really humanized are the students. Okay, because they have taken his heart and soul into their efforts to make this the, uh, positive, uh, event that we are having. And I want to thank Mason personally for his leadership and the time he's taken to make this all happen. Secondly, I took full advantage of the weather on Sunday and hit the DNL trail on my bike. Okay, after I got everything rolling and oiled up, um, it took me an hour and a half to get from the Hakandaqua to the Hakandaqua Bridge to the Cement Bridge. Simply, I greeted everyone I met on the trail, introduced myself and had conversations with them about why they're on the trail. Thank you for being here, are you going to be visiting us in town here anywhere else? Of the fifty-seven people I encountered, only twenty-one were from the borough. Okay? And even fewer were on bicycles. So, they were coming in to visit people, just to walk the trail on their way to another location. They were going to restaurants, to supermarkets, to gas stations in town, to take advantage of what we have economically. So, for us to think that the DNL trail is just a pathway, it's also, also an economic driver in this town and I'd like to talk more about that in future meetings, but just know that we have one heck of an asset that we have for our, uh, quality of life here in town and for further economic development and a spree decor among people on the trail and people downtown. So, keep that in mind and we have a long way to go yet with the trail as far as blooms and everything this year. A little fact here, our horticulturist, Lori Metz cautioned that we shouldn't be too quick to clean up the leaves and the brush because a lot of the pollinators that were looking to grow there are nesting in there for the winter. And the recommendation is mid-April to early May to start the cleaning because that's when they start to propagate and, uh, come to life again. So, just a little heads up, I talked to Leroy about it. So, we're looking forward to much more activity down there and much more color as the year goes on. So, that's all I have, thank you very much. And again, Mason, congratulations on the fine job you did. We're on our way. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Steph.
I hear my name and I speak. I just, with regard to the request from zoning hearing board for the appointment of alternate, alternate members, I just want to point out that pursuant to your zoning ordinance, which reflects section nine oh three of the municipality's planning code, that you may appoint that resolution at least one, but not more than three residents of the borough to serve as alternates, uh, for three-year terms. So, when we have those names, we can appoint one, two, three people by resolution. For three-year terms.
Thank you. Well, uh, first of all, Mason, I want to tell you that someone from the school contacted our family personally and they were so impressed, so thank your club for that, it does mean something. And I cannot forget my fire police. They give me a report. They had twenty-five fire calls for the month of February. They had a total of forty-two contacts. Eight motor vehicle accidents, one water rescue, one EMS assist. And then meetings and training total six times. Out of all of that, we had a hundred and thirty-two responders that are volunteers that come out for each of these calls are counted each time. So, please take that back to our fire police, Mr. Hall, they are deeply appreciated.
Will do.
That's all I have, except welcome Mr. Kunkel, Mr. Strain, welcome, and Mr. Garrus, thank you. Mr. Brokes.
Uh, I actually have nothing to say, uh, other than welcome to the new, new people. It's a pleasure to have you on board with us, we'll find something for you to do.
Oh, I just heard work up here.
Huh?
I heard work.
Work.
Judy has, they have work for them.
Absolutely.
Lots of. Thank you. Moving on. Agenda item number twelve, approval of the bills. And a motion to pay the bills.
We don't have it in front of us, I thought that was what we were going to hold off.
No, we have this.
Okay.
The one you were.
Okay, that, they sent out?
Yes.
Yeah, this is the one that I emailed.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, we got to make the motion first and then the question.
All right.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
You know you're wrong, right?
Motion by Ms. Haldeman.
Second.
Second by Ms. Armin. Questions, Mr. Brokes.
Okay, I'm ready.
Cardio partners for eighteen eighteen?
Uh, those are pads for the AED. The au- au- automatic external defibrillator.
Have we ever tried to get any of them from Lehigh Valley or Health or St. Luke's or anybody to do some?
Uh, that I, I, I have to talk to, uh, those are for the ones in the police cars.
We have.
You have?
But we can't do it all the time.
No, okay, understandable. Thank you. Thank you, appreciate that, Brian, chief. Removal of old video equipment for eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars? Why didn't we just keep it?
It was taken out of the one car and put into another.
Oh, that one? Oh, okay. I didn't even realize it was for the car cameras, because there's not a lot of details on our AP. So, that's why I was just thinking it was video equipment or, you know, if we did something with the streaming, but, okay. Frazier's? For twelve eighty-nine, I know we talked about, let's shop this around, I don't know if the timing is
Well, we're on, we're.
We're in the middle of a contract with them.
Yeah, we are, but we are definitely going to shop this around.
Because I've seen the bill from them, keeps on going higher and higher.
They're ridiculous.
Yes, and we need to do that, so thank you.
Down goes Frazier.
Hey, you're catching on quick.
Brackets for the decor, six thousand dollars, six thousand one hundred and five dollars?
Uh, what page are we on?
I don't have a page in front of me.
Oh. Who is the vendor?
Banners.
It's the brackets for the banners or for the decorations, it says decor.
It's for everything.
Oh, it is.
Oh, holiday outdoor decor.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are for the, uh, banners.
Okay. And what's the municipal league for sixty-five dollars? Is there a baseball league or softball league, I don't know of, bowling league?
Municipal league?
Municipal league for sixty-five dollars?
Is this some kind of do, is it Justice League?
Of America?
No?
I'm looking, I don't.
I'll have to print out that paper and bring it along next time. I like to take the time looking through it on the computer, so thank you for sending it.
Sure. Sixty-five dollars.
We can move on to the next one, because the next one's a little bit bigger. PNC Bank Seminar Chairs, I don't know what that was about, for thirty-five hundred dollars?
Uh, we bought, uh, chairs for the recreation, uh, center.
Okay.
That, that is a number of different things. It, it, the, the space does not allow for her to enumerate everything.
I will try to send an email prior so I don't have so many questions about this.
No, I, I don't mind the questions.
No, but I like to know more about the details of it, so it makes sense, it makes sense why I'm asking.
Okay.
And I interject, that was on the budget for the rec center, because I sit on that committee and, and chairs, Jason said, like it, it was time for them to be, you know, that they're heavily used, kids are rocking on them, people are using them. You know, it was pretty much all of the, um, outside area, like when you enter into the rec center, the, the tables and chairs out were there.
Perfect, no problem. Just wanted to know, thank you, that's all I had.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Posed? The eyes have it. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Right there with Jonathan.
Who took the first?
Ken.
Donahue?
Yeah, Ken too.
You don't hear anything on this side, do you? I think you're, you're.
The seventeenth of March, thank you. Second by Ms. Haldeman. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
The eyes have it.
How we fix for PSAB meeting? Are we all set for the PSAB meeting? Reservations?
Uh, yes.
Confirmations?